Call this meeting to order. All rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There was one change to the agenda, and that will be-
Mr. Mayor, there's two changes. Sorry. So, actually, three. We're removing this one.
So, it'll be a gambling resolution, number 2024-43, a gambling resolution of America and, uh, sorry, the Melrose Area Chamber of Commerce. Uh, then there is, um, seven G.
Seven F is removed.
Seven F is removed, seven G is a part-time police officer hire, H is for the ambulance. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Open forum. If anybody has something to talk about for... Okay. Then we're on to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments. Here's a payout four for the 2024 Main Street, uh, improvement projects from molder excavating. There's another payout, uh, number five, 2023, uh, railroad avenue, streets and utility improvements. Uh, there's two EMT appointments, uh, there's two gambling resolutions, and then there's a resolution for appointing election judges for the general election, and a police officer step increase. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We are on to, uh, public hearing. It is 6:02. Public hearing on the establishment of tax increment financing district number thirteen dash two within the municipal, uh, development district number thirteen, and adoption of the tax increment financing plan related there, too. Good day.
Good evening, Mayor Council. First and foremost, I'm Jason Murray. I'm with David Dronan Associates. Uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity. This is my first opportunity, uh, to work with the city and its staff. So, just, uh, first, before I jump into the TIF, I want to thank you for the opportunity. Much appreciated. Since I'm Mayor Council, you're here to hold this public hearing to see comment on the creation of tax increment financing district thirteen dash two. This is part, this, this TIF district, uh, is part of the municipal development district thirteen that was created with the apartment complex here back in 2023, on March ninth of 2023. We are including the remaining twenty-five parcels in this TIF district, uh, as part of it. However, most likely those, this will be a one part, it'll be, they'll be all conjoined into one parcel, uh, with Mr. Roach, uh, proceeding with his townhomes. In the TIF plan, there's just a couple, a couple of things I'd like to point out, Council is... There's been questions always when we put these together, um, we get the question of there's, there's information about bonded indebtedness and bonding and, and other financing vehicles. But I want to be clear that, uh, we, we make the statement in both section four and section nine that this is a contemplated pejorative development. So, it is a, uh, developer's risk. It's, the city is not bonding for it. Uh, the bonded indebtedness and some of the financing terms are just broad terms, uh, related to the, the statutory requirements and that. So, with that, we have a budget, uh, roughly about 2.5 million, uh, collection projected over twenty-six years. This is, uh, this is a little bit different from the original TIF district that was created out there. This TIF district is complying under the traditional, what I call the traditional housing TIF district, twenty-six years, and there are some, some income requirements. The reason we didn't use the workforce development is, there's a couple of reasons. First and foremost, uh, there's a vacancy. There's a two percent requirement for that workforce housing component that with all your new development, here you get the, the complex next door, the apartment complexes out to the west, we didn't know if we could meet that two percent vacancy. Plus, the developer has asked for some time, uh, a delay from the standpoint of a delayed timing for construction. So, he was looking at potentially starting in twenty-six or twenty-seven. Uh, and unfortunately for the workforce housing, it sunsets in 2027. So, it would have been a real tight timeframe. If we created it now, uh, we'd have that delay that we'd just be eating up years in that. So, the best fit, Council, was the traditional housing tax increment financing district. So, it does come with some, some, uh, twenty percent of the units must be at fifty percent, or forty percent of the units must be at sixty, and those are ongoing annual compliance requirements that the developer will have to follow. Uh, the other, the other thing I'd just like to point out is because of the delay in construction, there is, uh, there is note in the, uh, in the TIF plan that we are electing to delay to try and align that first year of increment as best we can with the start project. So, you'll see some elections to delay. We're delaying that first increment potentially to 2028 with this TIF plan, and we're, we're disclosing that, uh, as part of it. So, there's some highlights in there that you've probably seen in the TIF plan, uh, that covers that. The one change I will, will note, uh, Council, is that one of the exhibits still lists, uh, the economic development authority is the ownership. Speaking with Sheila, it sounds like the, the property's all been sold out with the city's state park. So, we will make that change based on final transcript, uh, when we file this with the Council. So, with that, Council, I'll, uh, pause for any questions or step aside for public comment.
Any questions?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, right at section seven, it is open to the public if anybody wants to ask any questions. All right, and it is 6:08. We will be taking action further down the line. Beyond the reports, uh, Police Chief, monthly report.
Good evening. August 2024, in our traffic area, we have fourteen citations, sixty-eight verbal warnings. Uh, for the month of August 2024, we received 266 calls, requests for service. Last year's 181. Uh, we ended on ICR at 2215, and last year was 1967. Uh, twenty-two agency assists, pretty in line with, uh, what we've been seeing for this year. So, we are up about, uh, 250 calls for the year so far. So, it's good to see that, um, even though staffing is, um, at a lower level, that we're still able to keep up with things and that, uh, it doesn't slow down regardless of we've got enough cops or not. So, um, an update on the squad car. We were able to get one ordered. Uh, it came in at about $48,000. You, uh, pre-approved $55,000 for that purchase, so that has been ordered. Uh, if things align and the life comes back to where things were, it should be a four to five-month build, um, but that's what they said previous years as well. So, if it were to come in early this, or late this year, we'd still have funding available, and if not, uh, we're expected to see it in 2025. Schools going well. All, all three campuses, yeah, three campuses, St. Mary's, uh, ALC, and the public school. Things have been going well there, so it's good to see that, uh, at least the early part of the school year, uh, people are paying attention, and we're not having any issues. Uh, in November, our, the whole county will be switching over to a new, um, reporting and dispatching system, so we're gonna be doing some extra training on that. Um, it's gonna be very well-welcome compared to our twenty-five-year-old system. We've been piecemealing together for decades, so... Um, we also will be having some training coming up with our own staff related to in-service, our defensive tactics, and firearms, and all those sorts of things. It's that time of year to do that again. So, um, other than that, we don't have much else going on hopefully for the remainder of this month and next month. Questions?
Thank you, Chief. City Attorney Report, Scott.
Yeah, and the only thing in my report is just, uh, noting the, uh, the work done, uh, with the Weehaw property, uh, and I will be talking more about that this evening, uh, with, uh, more of an update. And so, I, I won't spend a lot of time on it now, because I suspect that we'll be spending some more time on it later in the meeting. So, that's, that's all I've got, unless the Council has some other questions or concerns.
Sheila.
So, I was gonna talk about the road projects, but I am doing Dave's, uh, report for him after this, so I'll talk on that a little later. Um, admin and public work staff met with the constructions team at Sterns Electric the, last week to discuss the plan. Um, so we've got a really good idea now of when they need electric and when they need water, and as promised at last month's meeting, things sure did change on Craft Drive over the last month. Um, so now it won't be quite as exciting. Everything is, you know, shifting internally. Um, we also worked with Blue Door Storage this past month to give them another access point. Um, they have nine sheds constructed with four more planned, so a second access was really advisable over on the corner. We did submit a grant application on behalf of the Public Utility Commission to support our work in changing the overhead lines to, um, underground, especially with the tornado that came through. This project is really relevant in our studies and our disaster plans. So, we're working on that. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be discussing murals. Uh, the MADA members at their meeting last week discussed them and provided their thoughts, not necessarily on deciding what is art, but where it should be placed. And so, that's kind of the direction we're going. And we really have a lot of strong interest lately in businesses that want to move in, expand, and come to town, so we encourage people to continue reaching out on that. In reference to the Roach development that Jason just spoke about, um, Mr. Roach would like to come to a meeting. We talked, and I think we are gonna close on this property. He prefers late November, and Scott and I are working through a development agreement, so we will see him either at the October or the November meeting to discuss the project and, uh, come back to town and talk about what he's doing next. So, that's what I have for tonight.
Then we'll be talking about the city engineer report.
That's, Dave could not make it tonight. So, thankfully, we all saw that Main Street has been paved the last two days. Um, first course went down yesterday. Um, today, the second course that went on was actually the first wear course, and it'll stop at that point. The final wear course won't go on until spring, but the county is gonna come on and do temporary striping, so it will be striped. There is a lot of work left to be done. Um, there's some sidewalks that have to still go in from third to fifth, a ton of landscaping, and so what we're doing is we are still asking the public to please use the detours, try to stay out of the area for the safety of the people that are still working in there. So, for as much as possible, we're trying to keep the workers safe that need to continue the work on Main Street. Uh, the second phase of the street project for twenty-four is underway, and that is down by the bowling alley, and so we will be continuing to work on that. And up in Highlands, uh, they're stripping the top soil this week, and they will start on the piping next week. So, that road project is happening up on the north side. And that's all Dave had.
Could he give you a timeframe for the sidewalks when that's gonna be done?
Um, sidewalks should be, he said, the week of the third and the fourth of October is when they were gonna be coming back in, for those side.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, city administrator report.
We are currently hiring for the following positions: police officer, part-time street maintenance, it shouldn't say supervisor, I think I accidentally said that last time, um, electric operations director, and we are revisiting that. That might end up turning into a lead position, and then a journey line worker. So, we continue to be very short-staffed in our electric department at this time. We did hire a police officer, um, later on, or actually, guys, um, later on in the agenda, you'll see that you'll also be approving a part-time police officer, so that's good. Our next meeting with AFSMI and LELS will take place in October. We are currently just waiting on insurance renewals, because that's such a big part of how we do our negotiations, so we're just simply waiting for that. We are currently working with the League of Minnesota Cities on the power plant repair for the fire that happened at the power plant. And then myself, Ryan Meyer, our former finance director, Susan Danzel with SCH, our, our, um, engineer for our water wastewater, and Tim Vogel, who is our former water wastewater supervisor, have all been served depositions by the attorney representing Melrose Community LLC. Due to scheduling conflicts, we are hoping that we don't have to do those depositions until the first week in October. See what happens. Looking ahead to act, um, the good news is, is they finally did assign a judge to this, to this, so we finally at least have a judge that's been assigned to this, so we'll see what happens. Um, looking ahead, just so you guys know, we're gonna, in October, we're gonna be talking about the garbage assessments, the tri-cap contract, and then hopefully, we're gonna have a LE, LELS union contract back in October. And then, Mr. Mayor, and, um, the rest of my items are on the, uh, regular agenda.
All right. You're on to action items. Um, resolution number 2024, resolution adopting proposed tax levy, approving 2024 tax levy, um, collectible in 2025.
So, um, you guys, uh, it's, as a council, you guys met in a work session to talk about the preliminary budget. Tonight is the preliminary tax, um, levy that has to get, the proposed tax levy, um, and what is collectible in '25, has to get approved tonight. Just as a reminder, you can set this, and it can go lower, but it cannot go higher. So, the net tax capacity in 2024 was 3,320,088, and '25, the net tax capacity is 3,419,691, which is about a three percent increase from where, where we were a year ago. Again, keep in mind that a lot of the projects really, from a tax standpoint, like the apartments and everything, they really haven't come completely online from a tax capture type of thing, and they're TIFs, so it'll be a while. Our debt has gone down a little bit, so 90,000 in '24, and it's now at 80,000. That is, again, the bond for the fire hall. The general, um, fund, we are looking at 1,450,000, which is a 50,000 increase from '24. So, our total levy that we're looking at is 1,530,000. So, that is 44.74 percent as far as the che, tax rate goes. That is actually, uh, just under a percent, um, or just slightly over a percent, uh, decrease from where it was in '24. And that is due to, um, the net tax capacity increasing. So, the debt, again, as I said, is 80,000. The general fund would be 1,550,000. Originally, it was 1,450,000, but after we had the meeting, it went to, um, we added a, an additional 100,000 based on the, the discussion we had at the working meeting. So, the preliminary levy proposed is 1,630,000, which is $140,000 more than what it was in '24, and the tax rate is gonna be 47.67 percent. So, the change in the tax rate is 2.79 percent.
And this is preliminary?
Preliminary, yes, sir.
The goal is still to keep it?
Yep, the goal is. Oh, we actually have another working session in November.
Need some numbers yet to make sure-
Yep, because we don't have the insurance, we don't have the contracts settled. We don't, there's a lot of moving parts still, um, the, you know, yeah.
And the other thing is, this, this is what is used to, I think, send out the estimated-
Yeah.
-next year, correct?
Yeah.
So, everybody gets that, and it's the same thing every year. Our preliminary is typically higher than what their actual taxable is.
Yep. Not, you know, and not always, but, um, in the years that I've been here, I don't, I think we've decreased it almost every time. Now, you know, depending on what happens later on in the agenda, which we'll be talking about, we'll have to see. But that's all I have, Mr. Um, Mayor and Council, so I'm looking for action on resolution 2024-40, and then again on resolution 2024-41.
So, first action-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Just 2024-40. Jason's is the 2024-41.
Yeah, just take action on the proposed, uh, resolution.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and the Council take action approving the preliminary 2025 budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And B, resolution number 2024-41, approving the establishment of a tax increment fin, uh, financing district number thirteen dash two within municipal development district number thirteen, and the adoption of tax increment financing plan related to the development of the Roach Townhome Project, uh, to the accordance to, uh, Minnesota Statute Section, uh, inclusive and amended. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We're on to C, which is gonna be estimate for chipping the city's brush pile.
So, after the August third tornado, the city opened the area on River View Road for brush. We contacted three tree services for estimates to chip and clear the site. Hoffman and Cars declined to offer an estimate. Sherping, uh, tree and stump removal has provided an estimate of 15,000. They have availability to complete the work in September, so the area is cleared before leaf cleanup, and people feel encouraged to use the area for their leaves. So, um, this is one that, um, yeah, we just need to get this taken care of, in my opinion. It's not a, it was, it's a non-budgeted item, so it's something that we're gonna have to use some undesignated funds for. However, our concern is that if we leave it, people are just gonna keep piling on and piling on, and then where does it end? So, I know there's been discussion off and on. Um, as long as I've been here, we keep going back and forth, you know? Do we just have a place where people can just bring brush all the time? And with the, the solid waste provider West Central being able to give people, you know, their leaf, um, bins, I guess, that, that has helped. But I do know that's an ongoing discussion, but at the moment, I just, I think, um, I would recommend that the Council could give consideration to contracting with Sherping Tree and Stump Removal for tipping of the brush pile on River, on River View Road.
I'll make the motion. He's all on this all, too, right?
Yes. Yep.
I don't know how, how good a quality the chips would be, because it's mostly brush, but, um, if we would do this, then is there-
It gets pretty dirty.
Does it get dirty?
Also, we just don't want it sitting on our wellhead protection. That's where you-
Oh, yeah, they're bad. All right.
And, you know, you worry about the wellhead protection, nitrate getting in the water, so yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I don't know if I buy into that quite as much, but anyway, get rid of them, and that's fine. Um, but I know somebody brought up, why don't we just burn it rather than spending fifteen, whatever, thousand dollars on it?
Can't.
Well, there's differing opinions over there on whether or not you can, you can burn that. It's not hurting anything sitting there. Um, you could, one individual who is familiar with the pile, very familiar, um, told me you could push a, a part of it off, burn it, leave it sit over winter, let it dry a little bit. Push a part of it off, burn it, push another part off, burn it. Um, I know it, well, had protection. You pick up the ashes when you're done. Pretty simple. Anyway, another option out there.
I think if we do that future, you don't smash it together so tight either, because like-
Doesn't burn.
I know a bunch of the city guys are like, good luck pulling that all apart. Like, if you wanted to pull it apart and put it on little piles-
Yeah, right.
He's like, you'd have quite the task to, so...
I know mayors have run over with their big loader, push it up, push it close to the road if you wanted to burn it, but-
There's just some challenges out there. The wellhead, obviously, being one of them. And then the other one is that, and yes, it visually, I mean, we're way the heck away from it, but it's the Excel power line that becomes the other issue for us, so...
I think we gotta have the discussion on if we're gonna keep going in that spot, or-
Right.
We do this every time, and then we kinda just push it down the road.
Yep. That's why I brought that up.
So, I'll make a motion to approve this for the second.
Travis, yeah, there was a first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Uh, Finance Director, here.
So, we interviewed three candidates for the Finance Director position and brought two of the candidates back for second interviews. We offered the position to Jackie Niehaus, who will be starting at step one, which is 90,069774 on the salary scale, and she is to begin on September 23rd. I do want to say that we will continue to use Abdu as our financial consultant due to the fact that she's coming in new, and we're in the middle of our budget that is critical, so, um, and union negotiations, but, uh, they will work alongside her, and if we feel that she's really getting it, then, you know, we have the flexibility to do what we need to do. We're not, we're not obligated to, um, have so many hours with Abdu. If you remember, it's just an hourly contract, so I just wanted to clarify that. So, I would recommend approving, approving the hiring of Jackie Niehaus.
So, move.
There's a first, there's a second.
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, F, which was a grass cutting notice nuisance that is expired, and, and, uh, we're on to demolition bid? So, we had some changes, so-
Had some changes. I'll just give everyone an update. The city council met in a special session on Tuesday, September 3rd, to discuss 406 Main Street East. The city has entered into a consent agreement with the owner to handle the demolition and assess the property owner for the cost. Nine companies were approached regarding estimates for demolition, four elected to provide. The council on September 3rd authorized a demolition budget of $250,000. Uh, we were still waiting on more estimates, and we said we would probably be revisiting this depending on how the estimates came in. So, what has happened since then is we have received all the estimates that we believe we are going to get, and they do exceed $250,000. If it cannot be tested and abated, um, OPATs cannot be part of the project, um, because they are not authorized to tear down buildings that have asbestos in them. They would have to be tested and abated first. Um, you also have received the quotes from VET and Rochelle, um, and then we have the new quote from Landwear. Landwear's quote, quote does include hauling everything away, and they do have, uh, the number in there for fortifying the common wall after it is down and protecting the existing wall that remains, and basically putting steel over it similar to across the street after the 400 block fire. Since all this happened, we have been approached by individuals from town who are interested in possibly taking on the project and restoring it, um, cleaning it out, getting it down to its studs, and taking on the project of bringing it back to a commercial space with apartments on top, basically what it was. They are here tonight to talk about, they toured the property yesterday. Some members of the council have been able to get inside the property. Um, the group from town was able to meet with our building official, and I will let them address their ideas for the project.
Do you wanna come up? And just make sure you say your name up there for public record, okay?
And I'll just give this to you guys if you wanna hand that around. That is our rough estimates, what we're coming up with for what's going on, but we all gotta do with it, so... Well, hello, everybody. My name is Nathan Hillner. I'm the owner of North Star Properties, LLC. I actually go around and I retrofit more or less residential, but once I heard that this building was potentially gonna get demoed in my hometown, I figured I'd start looking into it, seeing if there's anything that me and my contractors can do. So, I, actually, we walked through it with everybody, uh, Tuesday. So, we walked through in the morning on Tuesday. At that point, we kinda had some questions, concerns, issues like that, that we noticed before we even opened it. So, then we actually met, what, a half hour, hour later with, actually, the building official, and then we kinda talked to him of what he's looking at, what our guesstimation, what we're thinking we're gonna do, or what we're hoping to do this thing to start with yet this year would be fix what Scott messed up by taking that lower roof off, because actually underneath this, this is a fall-sprained roof. So, underneath here, starting at the back half, it's two-by-tens twelve, or two-by-tens or two-by-twelves, twelve inches on center, and they're actually running clear span in the full 24 foot. And then throughout the middle here, we actually crawled up way on the front where that roof's collapsing. We took pictures underneath it. Down that center wall is actually just one-by-sixes that were supporting a two-by-six going up at an angle. So, the design was actually dumping all the water towards Jacobs and then actually towards the hardware store. So, they had the water running against each pair of pit wall, and then ran to the back, and then eventually made it to a gutter that is no longer existing. So, what our new thought would be is obviously with that existing two-by-twelves that are down there, um, talking with the structure under here that was altered with Landwear, um, I was talking about options that we would have if we get this thing opened up. You'd have to come through it. We'd have to find out what joys we're back. So, if all suddenly find out where the main water leakage is, which obviously we can tell, we're gonna have a lot of water in that area, um, but what he was stating to me, which, what I kinda figured is, on the two-by-twelves, worst-case scenario, we have to go in and sister with an LBL, to use laminated lumber, which would give us enough distance to clear span the 24 foot, which is what the building existing is. And then, we were also contemplating, so anytime you use load bearing, you're supposed- And then we were also contemplating, so anytime you use load bearing, you're supposed to stack everything. With the structural guy, we were asking him, cause obviously here we got an apartment here, kitchen here. Go back, the main gathering area, I call it the pigeon shoot, which is on the side of the building. That is where the main gathering area is for entering those two. And there's wall supporting all over in here. And he's stating that he would give us permission that he would, we'd be able to carry those loads throughout the building based on how it's constructed. So really the ultimate game plan on this thing, fix the roof, we tear everything down to studs. We have, uh, the structural engineer would come in, he'd address the scenario of the whole building. We'd have every part of it looked over for life safety. At that point, we'd go through, do electrical throughout the whole building. Um, downstairs would actually be turned into offices is what our game plan would be, or something on that extent to the point of being a commercial space. Uh, upstairs would be a two bedroom apartment again. We're still, I'm still contemplating on how to do the entry to those apartments. I don't know if I'd wanna file it into the back of the existing building and then use kind of this area, maybe reframe a little bit of the apartments around a little bit. But my main goal on this thing would be steel it to match outside, uh, the existing brick still. And we just kinda retrofit it to keep the existing look to match, kinda like Jacobs buildings are for that matter of fact. So my main thing, try to redeem it if at all possible. But we're into the point of based on rough bids, and again, everyone's protecting themselves right now because nobody knows until we open this thing up, nobody's gonna say, hey, I have twenty grand to do it. When else would you open it up and you're getting forty or fifty? What I'm giving for numbers is gonna be, everyone's protecting themselves as much as possible and rightfully so. Um, but I, on my mind, I think it'd be too nice of a building to demo. But it's getting to the dollars and cents part that it might be too far. But it's something that I kinda wanna talk to you guys about, get your opinions on if there's any grant money out there to fix this. Um, but right now the value of the building is negative three hundred and eighty some thousand, so that's what's gonna cost you definitely. So Scott, we do have permission to stop to purchase it. So he did give us the okay, we have a, we can write a P A on it. Um, the, the biggest concern I have is taking responsibility of it, we get into it and all of a sudden the building's too far. Which according to the structural guy, he said he's not worried about it. So when I, after I spent about two hours on the phone with him, um, and he's on board, once it's ripped out, once we have it all open, to come in and really dig into it more. Right now he couldn't based on, obviously Scott didn't want anybody opening anything up. So, and I know you guys are kind of on a tighter timeframe with Landwear, I don't know what timeframe Landwear wanted to do this in. But, uh, actually, if, to actually get into it, rip stuff apart and start trying to dig into it, I don't know what my structural guy would be at for time. And I know time is kinda where we're at with everything right now. It's time's gonna be the biggest, till I'm on this project. The building will not make one more year with that roof like that. It will, it'll be gone. So we, the roof, I've got, if we can do something, make something happen on it, I got guys, we could have the roof on probably middle of November. By the time I'd be able to cut it all out, cause what we'd actually end up doing is cutting off the, or ripping the whole roof off and lay plywood across the whole thing. And you literally be walking across the plywood on top of the two by twelves. So you'd be able safely remove all that top stuff and then you have, I actually talked to Arnsen Construction. We'd go in here, have to talk to the structural. We'd have to actually put anchor bolts on the outside of the building to tie on ledgers. And everything would have to ledger inside of that existing building. And we'd have to sandwich it with bolts and anchors because they will not let you just tie into those old brick because they will not hold. So you pretty much are gonna make a sandwich out of it. And on the outside, we'd have to run probably steel, we were thinking like six feet is what we kinda were thinking is we'd run six feet of steel down to cover it and you'd have a steel cap up over the top and then back on to that existing roof. So, I mean, the roof, once you get the roof done, the inside stuff is pretty cosmetic. I mean, it would, no matter what, you're tearing it down to studs. You gotta get rid of insulation, you gotta get that, all the wood exposed and start dehumidifying it. You gotta get the moisture out of that building. Um, we talked to Scott, he mentioned that there was hardly any leaks in it at all until he did his bush fix. And the bush fix is where the problem came in. So assuming based on what he did, you can see, actually, we walked across this, we were actually up here today. Uh, but you can see all this is all exposed plywood, he never had it tapered up or nothing. So all your water after your parapet was flooding down and from here it all ran across and down and in. So assuming what happened is snow loads here and here, and that's what broke our trusses. And they were legitimately two by sixes spanning fourteen feet. So it was never constructed to last per se, but when Scott did a bush fix and got water in it, it wasn't gonna hold. So, um, I don't know what, what are your guys, that's thoughtful, what do you guys wanna see out of the building? Is there anything that the city council wants to see? Is there anything you guys don't like, wanna see, don't wanna see? Uh, is it to the point of do we even wanna save it? I mean, the worst part about it is we demo it off. That lot will end up going back to the county in seven to ten years, you wanna go tax forfeiture. And then you guys will get it back and they'll try to sell it for five grand and no one's gonna buy it. It's only twenty-six feet wide or thirty feet wide, which is not a usable space. So that's what my dilemma is, and we've already got chat with the blank lot that he parked next door. And tying this one out, interfering with Jacobs building, I mean, the hardware store's not an issue, that's just got the pigeon chute, as I call it. That's just attached to that, so there's nothing really with the hardware store that's an issue. But it's shoring up with Jacobs building, I mean, it'd just be nice to keep it, it'd be an eyesore to get rid of it. But yet it's a heck of a liability to take it on. And that's where my, it's been a short couple of days of thinking about this, it's a heck of a liability for my company to wanna take it on. Um, and that's kinda where I'm torn on what to do with it for the liability purposes. Uh, my estimate I have right now is roughly around four hundred thousand dollars it would take to renovate it. But that would be giving us, pretty much whole building would be brand new except for the brick on the outside. But that'd give us two apartments in town with, obviously they won't be, they will not meet ADA capabilities to not putting an elevator in it. And we were talking to Bill a little bit about what, what commercial codes are gonna have to be brought up to keep it as commercial versus what it could be kept, kept as residential. There's a lot of variables still in this that nobody had for sure answers on. And a lot of design thought has to go into this thing. But my main goal, if you wanna do this thing, would be get that roof on it, get it sealed off, get a new door in the back, just get everything so things watertight. And then over winter, maybe we can come back and review how we wanna do the insider, even once we get the process rolling. I can work on blueprints, we can talk to the structural guy, we can get kinda everything played out. So everyone has a say on what we're kinda doing with it. Um, I'm a hundred percent open to anything, I just really feel bad letting the building go to waste. Cause it, I mean, it's not a huge building, it's four thousand square feet, Main Street. But I just wish Scott would've said something five years ago, cause he has a lot of headaches. But, um, yeah, I don't know, is there anything you guys have for questions for me or anything that we've seen that you guys wanna know how any part of it's constructed? We kinda dug into it probably a little more than we should've, but Scott, when he said he'd sell it for a dollar, I didn't think Scott really cared. So we may have looked at a few things just to make sure the construction matches what Jacobs did. And that's what makes it nice working with Jacob, is Jacob created his and all three of those buildings are all three constructed exactly the same. Other than Jacobs hasn't been.
Great, council?
No, I, uh, I was, I actually started when I saw the last quote, I started what, crushing all, we should be able to save it for that price. Somebody should be able to.
And, and realistically.
It's, it's not.
And my numbers, don't get me wrong, I'm gonna tell you right now, my numbers, everyone's guesstimating because nobody has any clue.
Right.
I'm going off of, everyone's giving me high numbers until everyone opens it. I mean, we're, we're spitballing ideas here how to do it. Um, but everything with the structural guy, I talked to him and he's like, that, that's one of the better buildings he's seen. Uh, but he's like, don't get me wrong, they're still gonna take time and effort into it. Same one, yeah, right. So I talked to him right after I got his number from you, uh, it was actually quite a long conversation with him. Cause I was asking about, like, cause Bill did not want, Bill pretty much said he did structural guy.
And Bill will go with what structural.
Correct, yep, so my main issue with this building is that, uh, what I want, if we do wanna do it, there's only one thing that concerns me is getting an architect involved on the project. You get an architect that would have to engineer this thing to meet all ADA requirements, all that stuff, that's where you're gonna, it's probably a hundred thousand dollars just an architect needs to get a plan put together. So what my ultimate goal would be is to keep, pretty much keep it existing as much as possible. Uh, probably frame off that back roof, make it so we can make, I'd have to have that part. What I'd wanna do is get an architect to look at the fire escape part, cause that's where I come in for the part of the apartments upstairs. So we'd have to have that double check to make sure everything meets accordingly. We'd probably have to cut some different windows in to meet egress in them. Um, but I, I think it's too nice to get rid of it. Uh, it does, it, it is an eyesore right now, but if you look, it's a diamond in the rough. There's a lot of good bones in there, it's a lot of good building, but it just looks redness. The drop ceilings, everything just filled up with moisture and it's bad. But you walked it, I mean, the basement's dry, you got a good start. And that's even what the building official, structural guy, all those guys are like, you got a good bone, you're sitting on your foundation, your foundation's perfect. So as long as your block or brick is stacked, the outside bearings, you're sitting fine. Um, all our joys are tucked two inches in the brick, so that's fine. Um, yeah, it's just gonna come down to working with the structural guy to get it safe and sound. That's where our goal would be on it. Um, uh, I guess for, uh, lots of people, Paul, me earlier, we've brought up to new code. It, it's gonna be a brand new building except for the outside shell. But I think for what, we look great in this town, we'd be keeping it. But at what dollars and cents is what we gotta decide. So, and the liabilities, cause obviously, like you said, for a business to take this on, there's a lot of liability in it. So.
What Nate didn't say yet too is, you know, he was obviously asking me right away, being realtor, you know, what's the value of the building after rehab? And approximately based on the cap, fullness, work footage, it's about three hundred thousand. So obviously right now, he's spending four hundred thousand dollars on it, you know, he's at a negative roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Based on a lot of different factors as far as, you know, it might not only be two fifty, it could be four fifty, there's just so many unknowns.
Could be two fifty.
Yeah, if you're, I, I could be.
You don't, you don't know.
Realistically, at the end of the day, I could still have to demo this thing.
Right.
And that's where my dilemma comes in, cause I, right now, looking at it from the out, outside, looking at it, you're, it doesn't seem that bad. And with what I know and what I've done working for Saint Rose for so many years, I fixed these before. It's not, it's not that bad, but it scares a lot of people because you don't know. And the unknown is what's gonna either make or break this project. So I mean, uh, again, timeframe's gonna be key on this project, so if Landwear wants to do it, uh, uh, it'd be, we'd wanna get in there for, or, you know, get permission from Scott to go in there, maybe open it up a little bit more, get the structural guy in there to look and try to do a little bit of due diligence on the front side before I go and buy it. Um, it pretty much sounds like Scott's game for kinda whatever we wanna do. He wants us to try to, try to save it, I guess, but if you wanna touch the roof, I'd feel a lot better. But a lot better, so.
And Nate would just say that everything went perfectly, I mean, like literally the lowest would probably be three hundred thousand.
It, it's three fifty? I think the, by the time I get structurals and get everything approved and do everything, best case scenario, you'd be on it for around three fifty. Right now I'm at about three ninety. But again, I have a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency in there for, oh God, unknown, I mean, something like this, twenty-five grand's not that, that ain't gonna get you very far. But I wanted to make sure I had, some of the numbers are kinda, everyone's saying, okay, worst case scenario, and that's kinda what I put in there. But I, I don't know, it's, until everyone can get, like, we didn't, but, nobody went inside the building except for me and Jacob and the city members that day and the building official that day. I didn't let any subcontractors, nobody's even went in there to double check. We're going off of the hundred pictures or so I took and sending it to them. So it, it's legitimately, everyone's just throwing hail Marys at it to see if we can save this. And I wanted numbers to come to the meeting with, so at least we have an idea with, okay, are we six hundred thousand, then it doesn't even get even attempted. Well, we're almost at the same price as demoing it, so do we, is it to the point that we wanna save the building as a town? Or do we want to demo it? I mean, I, 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 the biggest issue I have is my business is gonna take the risk. If this thing turns out to be a complete dud and some things just completely weigh off, it would, uh, uh, be done. That's what scares me, just a huge risk.
Yeah, I think this, this is obviously gonna require a little more due diligence on your part.
A hundred percent.
And a discussion with you and Scott on our part.
Yeah, I think, I think later on.
On how this, how this looks, whether, because I'd like to see it saved, obviously.
I think so too.
Yeah, if that building gets torn down, nothing's gonna ever get built there again, so.
It'll be a good chat, if, the way I look at it in the future, or, I, I'm hoping to do this project over winter. So I'd be looking at like April or May, I'd have it done. I'd get the roof on yet this fall.
Right.
But the gunning part, I'd try to attempt to do over winter. And some of that's gonna come down to coordination with city help or whatever, however we're gonna put these dumpsters, keep everything out of everybody's way. But try to still keep it as efficient as we can. I'm figuring I'd have a dumpster there probably two weeks, two and a half weeks, and have the whole thing gutted out and starting over. And then from there, I would just park a dump trailer probably in the alleyway between, on the backside of mine and Jacob's building. I'd park a dump trailer there and just haul up a little bit of scrap we have as we're going. So try to keep it as inconvenient as we can for everybody. Um, but the biggest, the biggest tackling is that roof. And I'm coming up with, I've got quotes from anywhere from hundred fifty thousand to two hundred some thousand fix that roof. We had two different flat roofers out there today and one construction company. So, cause we'd have to reconstruct it, anchor it, do everything to like make it correct and that way. The structural guy's not on my tush. Cause he, uh, he's really concerned about how capable the brick is, is what he's worried about. But we only got a couple of issues, which is right back here where the gutter is. Obviously that's a water issue, so I got money in for tuck pointing those brick. We tuck point this area and I'd actually just continue to steal from Jacobs and come straight across. So.
The west side is like, yeah.
The west side's in amazing condition.
It's very good condition. And it's just, just the front is the top six feet where it's papered, there's just more water that, yeah.
And we were talking about doing it across your building and mine, or this one, tie a six foot piece of steel across it just to protect it from going up, bricks falling off and stuff like that down the road. So.
Alright.
So.
Yeah, is anybody else, is everybody?
No, I, I mean, we know it's not gonna get built on otherwise.
Yeah.
No, I was just saying, I'm kidding, remember, the, the worst part is someone's getting stuck with the burden of the four hundred and some thousand.
Right.
It's, it's terrible, but we know that's what's gonna happen long term, but.
So I'll just add a few things. The structural engineer who he was referring to was in the building. Um, it is the same structural engineer that Landwear used to come in to talk about shoring up the property. Uh, Travis was along with them, so Travis is familiar with this structural engineer. He was there that day that we went through it. Um, Jacob Imdick is here, um, tonight. There is something to be said when working, cause Jacob probably has the most to lose in this situation one way or another. And so Jacob is part of these discussions. Our building official previously, prior to Tuesday or whatever day we were in there, had never been in the basement. Um, he had only been on the first floor. And so when we had it at the opportunity this week to go back in with the building official, he was able to go into the basement for the first time. He was very happy to see there was no water in the basement. That made the building official feel very good. Um, also we look back on old pictures. When we looked at pictures from August of twenty twenty-three, this building, the roof was bad, but there was, it wasn't that bad. So we also took some solace in the fact that we know the water hasn't been rushing in except for the last few months. So it hasn't been accumulating water for five years. So there is a little more hope of the potential of something being salvageable here. So I guess what you all are asking for tonight is time to explore further?
Uh, that's what I'd be asking for if there's any way possible to actually open up certain areas where we think the biggest concern is and if I should get that structural engineer back for one more trip. Just to have him verify, okay, guys, if we have to put it up, and again, not a huge deal. If he can verify that all we need to do is put an sister and LBL next to it, perfect. But the way he's, the way me and him were talking though, is he's gonna actually let us use tributary bearing points and we might even only have to snag a two by ten next to it. So he makes it sound like he's not too concerned about anything structurally on it, as long as the block brick aren't good. And that you can physically see on the west side, you're not catching bearing on the north or south wall. Everything's bearing east and west. So I, I think we just, we'd like a little bit more time to open it, if Scott's gonna give us permission, just dig into it, just a couple more, give us a couple of days to just open it up and really look at certain parts of it before we just decide to, hey, scrap it.
And speaking to the Landwear question, Landwear does not have time in September anyway. They would not have time till October, um, is what they told me. Um, I'm also gonna ask Attorney Demick to come up and speak to the consent agreement, which was signed with Scott as to how we would proceed from here.
Can I actually come up for one more thing?
Sure.
So I'm gonna ask you guys one question. I know this is kinda, we were talking about it a little bit before the meeting, but there's an easier way to fix this building. Um, it's not gonna match the rest of Main Street. This is where I think maybe it's not what you guys are wanting to do. So obviously we've got two parapet walls here, and these two are both the bearing points on this whole building. Would the city be opposed if we've got the top of this bearing, or this wall is about two and a half feet, right? Something like that from the top of flat roof to the top of, front of our parapet?
About three, yeah.
So would the city ever, I mean, this is a hundred percent to you guys, but it'd be an easier fix and maybe a better term, long term? What would happen if I would take, I can go, so it's a twenty-four foot wide building, so if I went commercial steel, I can go down to a six or a half twelve pitch. What would happen if I pitched this, this way? It's still tucked behind the parapet, so you really wouldn't see it. And then I gutter this side? And then I gutter this side, gutter this side, run the tra- run the downspout over to here, and dump the water either between these buildings, or run gutter all the way down and out? If I can do that, we can actually just clean up all this garbage up there. We can cut holes into that, add insulation into there, so the insulation that would sit on top of our two by twelve existing, this would become blown fiberglass and we turn it into a cavity. With the four different heights here, what I would do is I'd actually take two by twelves, treat it, drill an epoxy down into that block, so you'd actually drill a, wow, probably a three foot piece of bar. You drill it in every twenty-four inches on center, stack your two by twelve, so it flushes out this height and that height match. And then you just run a set of twenty-four inch trusses across it, plywood it, tie back it, and then put commercial grade steel on it. The commercial, the reason why I'm saying commercial grade steel is I can get down to a half twelve. And then that way from, technically, the only people are gonna see it is, is pretty much Credit Union. Cause the pitch of that thing is only gonna be five or a half twelve from here, so from here up, from bottom of the trust to this, you're only gonna be up to one or twelve inches. So you'd be up a foot total. Well, a foot's still gonna keep us behind our parapet wall, it'd be a better long term for the building itself. Um, it, the only issue, like me and Jacob were talking, is I'd have to gutter it, cause I do not wanna dump water onto Jacob's roof. And obviously, there's an eight foot gap between these two, or a six foot gap between them. But I'd rather get the water, I don't wanna flood Sherping or, uh, Schulzenberg's building, and I don't wanna flood the foundation of this building. So I'd like to take that water, come out either into the alleyway somewhere and dump it, or do some kind of a water mitigation, maybe with the city and find out what we should do with the water.
Well, that's probably be more of a planning and zoning question anyways.
Okay, well, I, I just figured I'd ask you guys and see if that was at all before you go to them, but.
Can you get that approved with all the engineering? I mean, obviously, it's us, but it's a lot.
Well, it's just for the engineers, but the structural guy, I'd have him, I'd have him design it.
Right.
I wouldn't have a choice. Even that other roof, if we do a flat roof, that would have to have the structural guy design, seeing how often I need those bonger, the threaded rods on the sides. Structural engineers are gonna have to come out and he'll decide whether it's forty-eight, thirty-six, or twenty-four.
I'm about ninety-nine percent sure that the, um, slate pitch roof would be fine. I mean, I, I'm, I'm thinking the.
We, they did do that on the building that, that was, that, that had the fire that time.
I mean, I, ultimately, it's a better, better investment for long term of that building. Uh, Jacob's same way. You'd like to get rid of your flatters eventually too. It's like, what are you, their only way to get rid of them is somehow pitch them. And it just.
And to do it the long way would just be.
You couldn't, the trusses can't do it. It, I.
Can you raise it up in the front to get the slope?
Yeah, so we, we did this, we did the math, so this is a hundred and ten feet. So to get any kind of slope on this, we'd actually have to frame a three foot wall on top of that parapet that's existing. And to me, that seems like we're dealing with a limbo that nobody wants to have. So, that's where we kinda jumped that idea. So then, like you said, the other option would be go back in, two by six this, with a real wall, run an LBL across the whole bottom, set the two by six on top of that LBL, draw it down, and then take two by eights and come across. And then hang your two by eights on the outside wall, and hang your, uh, two by eights on top of the wall you'd be framing it. But ultimately, my, if, if the city would allow it, the best case scenario is your twenty-four foot common trusses, lay them every tw- uh, twenty-four inches on center across it. We'd eliminate these out, so get rid of those blocks, clean them up, and then just eliminate it. Cause right now, the furnace in that thing is a ninety percent efficient, so it's already, uh, vented out the sidewall. So it's vented out between, uh, the hardware store and this building, so.
What do you, what do you do for snow slide though?
You'd have to put cleats on it. So you'd have those commercial cleats, they go wherever, on this thing, just because it's gonna be kinda just sitting back in there, I'd probably put two rolls of cleats on it, just to ensure that it stays up there.
Okay.
But that half twelve, I, I would have a hard time seeing that half twelve really push a lot of snow. But it is a concern, cause we, can, if we try to rebuild that pitch and shoot, which I don't think I'm going to, I think we're just gonna leave that off, frame that doorway in and just kinda make it look right, um, and then try to do staircases from the inside. I don't want, there's enough space in there that a little bit of snow load with the gutters on there would not hit their building, but I still don't like the idea of a big chunk of snow sliding down onto it. But I think we put a couple of rolls of snow cleat on there, cause the AC and everything is actually down on the ground over here. So just to keep that area safe, I'd run two, two rolls of snow cleats. Cause yeah, no one's really gonna, if you really think about it, no one's really gonna see that, cause it's only gonna be a foot, foot above the parapet. So you're gonna be a pretty low profile. The only spot you're gonna see it again is the Credit Union building. And they don't, they look at this right now, so I think they'd still be pretty happy with it, but, so. Um, with that, when it go, so you want to, should we set up a meeting? Do you guys wanna do a special session on it, or what do we, how do you guys wanna approach this? I guess I've never done it before. You guys talk, and then tell me what I need.
Let's see, probably.
I was gonna say Scott needs stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and speaking to the, you know, we, we've got a consent agreement, which is, you know, Weehoff's permission to go in and demo it and assess him the costs. We've got permission, but I was careful to draft it to where we are not obligated. Because when we were putting this together, we had no idea what this was gonna cost, and I didn't want the city locked in to it, to the job. So this is, okay, you can do it, but this, the council, I mean, doesn't have to do it. If you wanna pursue this option, if this sounds more attractive, you can do that. You know, really, it sounds like Landwear wouldn't be in here till October anyways, so I, you know, and I'm assuming that, uh, if, if it gets opened up and, and Nathan finds something that changes the whole plan, and he decides that, no, he'll take his dollar and go someplace else, he's not gonna buy this building. Um, we still have our consent agreement in place, and we can call up Landwear and pull the trigger. So you, my biggest concern looking all that is one of safety, and, you know, if we, you know, delay things for a week or two to try to flesh this out, you know, I, I, I think whatever the final decision is, people will feel better about it, uh, at that point than just saying, nah, we're not gonna entertain this, and, uh, and just go in and tear it down. Because I, 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 I'm assuming you've gotten comments, and I've gotten comments from people, you know, whatever you do, you, you'll be second guessed. Uh, but I think you, you probably hold it to the community to explore this idea a little bit, uh, before just going in and taking it down. And I, I, you know, if, if we're all really wrong, and this thing collapses tomorrow night, uh, you know, we've got a problem, but, but, you know, odds are that it won't happen that quick, and, you know, you could get, come back and revisit this again with better information from, uh, from Nathan.
Currently, with the, until Landwear would come to town to do that, is it between Weehoff and?
Yeah, this, this is all between, between Weehoff, if, if they decide they wanna do this, and he buys the property and he's going ahead. The city's not involved.
That's, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, this is, you know, whatever he's doing, he's gotta be nego- negotiating it with, with Weehoff. You know, so, you know, I think you're just kinda letting the city, hey, keeping me informed that, you know, yeah, there is another option. Probably costs as much as tearing it down, but if it works, we keep the building. If it doesn't work, we've spent the same amount of money, uh, for a vacant lot.
So liability wise, the city's not liable for what they wanna do in the meantime, and then what you're asking is just if there's any grant, which, would that be written privately anyway, right? That's not a.
Yeah, and whether or not he wants help from the city is something we talk about in the next couple of weeks here while we flush everything.
And that could be some of the loan programs and that.
And that would probably go before MATA anyway, right?
Yeah, I bet we've got before MATA.
So, that would be in another two and a half weeks.
So now it is our.
Once you're not a long time, I could have a decent, I could have a pretty good idea if Weehoff will give us, we have whole harmless sign with Weehoff, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so we, I think we could talk to him and say, he'll probably give us permission to go in there and start opening it. Not doing it, not opening anything structural, but just getting some of the cosmetics down and seeing what we've got from bones. Cause that's gonna be the biggest question, is what bones are left? And I think it's gonna be a lot better than, it's just deceiving just cause it is just full of drop ceiling tiles, it just looks horrendous. But I think structurally, I think we're gonna be all surprised with how well that building was constructed back when it was originally built, so.
So we can, uh, well, like you said, yeah, well, we're gonna have to table this, and then we just put it on the. The next council gen- agenda we should know, huh?
I'll have a, one better idea of what it looks like, and then we'll make a exact decision. First, and we'll be normal with Weehoff.
So I make a motion to table?
A second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to table, uh, this demolition bid. Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion is carried. All right, chief mouse.
Uh, before you tonight, looking for a council consideration to hire Alyssa Leschinsky. Uh, Alyssa Leschinsky used to be Alyssa Ingerfer, who worked for our department, uh, went to county and then actually, uh, left law enforcement, um, to go into the insurance world, much like, uh, previous employee with ours, ours as well. Um, she has kept her license active with the Osakis Police Department on a part-time basis, and is looking for, um, a little more activity as well as, um, the ability to help us out, uh, with our short staff if, if possible. Um, some scheduling that has opened up a bit more from when she originally approached us in like January of this year. So it, uh, makes a little more, more sense to explore it now. Uh, we would make the offer contingent upon, um, successful, more favorable psychological backgrounds, drug tests, and all the other pre-employment things that we normally do. And then we would work towards, uh, some short training and move her into a part-time position.
All right, can you get a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion is carried. Sounds good. Thanks, Craig. And then, uh, for the ambulance department, we are on each.
Oh, yeah, the, there is one addition, uh, before we get to the next action item, based on the work session you just had. Um, I am making a recommendation that the, um, I don't have it in front of me. That this, the, uh, the city go ahead and approve, here it is, the city go ahead and approve the Braun IV pumps for purchase for the ambulance, three of them at four thousand two hundred and nine dollars each, for a total of twelve thousand six twenty-eight thirty-two. And then the Zoll vent, so they can get that ordered, and that is one Zoll vent, and that would be sixteen thousand one eighty-eight forty. So I'm recommending that those be approved by the council tonight, so they can get ordered by the ambulance.
I make a motion?
Second.
There's a first and a second. Home favor say aye?
Aye.
Close, motion is carried. Okay, update, uh, Melrose Fire and Natural Disaster Recovery Fund grants.
Yes, at the August meeting, you asked that we come back and update you on the existing Melrose Fire and Natural Disaster Recovery Grant Fund. Uh, before the tornado fund, it had a balance, uh, before the tornado, the fund had a balance of nine thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Three applications for fifteen hundred each were approved, and another three applications for five hundred were approved. The fund now has a balance of three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Uh, we have the same proposals from the Initiative Foundation and the Greater Melrose Community Foundation to set up disaster funds. The only other update I have on this, um, is the Women of Today have said they don't want to be the vehicle to pass these applications through. They believe that there are other entities in Melrose better suited. Um, so what happens now is someone fills out an application. They, here up at the city with me, I send it to the Women of Today for approval, but before they approve, the local clergy in town also sign off. Um, Lutheran Church and the Saint Mary's Church both have to agree that the applications are, um, approved. And they don't mind finishing off the fund if you want, but they're also very willing to have someone else finish off the distribution of the fund, or to give that money to something else, um, whether it's the food shelf, or whether it's one of these other two funds as starting seed money, you know, to get those going. But like I said, they're willing to finish off the fund, they just, going forward, they do not wanna be the vehicle for either of these two funds. Um, both the Greater Melrose Community Foundation and Initiative Foundation are, still remain interested. Both would have to lo- use local five oh one C three organizations, because these funds cannot give money directly to individuals. So there would have to be a pass through regardless. And so that's where we're at. So we can hold where we are, keep the funds, um, or we can go forward with another organization. But we just came back to you this month to update you, cause that's what you asked for.
All right, but there's still an action item, uh, to, uh, to consider the proposals from the Initiative Foundation, uh, Greater Melrose Community, uh, Foundation determine if you want to, uh, enter into an agreement at this time? What are we thinking?
Um, so the Melrose, um, area one, is that already formed?
It is. Uh, the Greater Melrose, uh, Community Foundation does exist. There's a board of directors.
Okay, and they're local?
They're local.
Okay. Initiative Foundation local?
Um, Saint Cloud, but they would work with, through local organizations, similar to what they're doing with this existing fund.
Okay.
They would need a pass through vehicle, a local pass through to get the funds distributed.
I kinda like the idea of having the local, local fund.
I agree.
Anyway, so I guess, no other questions, cause I'd make a motion to go with the Melrose area.
All right. We have a first, do we have a second?
Second.
We have first and second. Home favor.
Wait, what'd you say?
They wanna do it.
Greater Minnesota, or Greater Melrose Community Foundation.
Home favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Close, motion is carried.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, vacant building registration.
Okay, Colleen and I are gonna work together on this one. Uh, last year, on your July twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting, the council decided not to pursue the vacant building registration ordinance. Given the recent concerns with the collapsing roof on a commercial property, the staff is asking council to reconsider the ordinance, making whatever modifications you want to it. If we can take the snowbirds out of it, we can take residential homes out of it. But we're just asking to consider a vacant building registration process, so that we can look at these properties before we're at the point we're at tonight. Um, again, the intent is not to collect a lot of fees or burdensome registration, but to avoid these situations of blight and safety. And I'll let Colleen speak additionally to this one.
So, again, you know, I always, you know, we joke about this, Sheila gets to always be the good cop, cause she always has a really good fun stuff to say, and I'm gonna be the bad cop here. And by that, what I mean is, we are passing up on an opportunity. If we don't pass an ordinance, it's clear that there are other buildings in town, Brutus Butcher being one of them, where we really do need to have a vacant building. This is not meant to be, um, punitive in any way, it's simply meant to work with the property owners, create that awareness, and to be able to get in those buildings in a timely fashion. If we would've had something like this in place, perhaps with Mr. Weehoff, you know, twelve years ago, or whenever he closed the bar, we would've been able to help him at that time, or help him with getting folks like Nate and Jake interested in purchasing it. So it's simply a way for us to work with those property owners, but also putting them on a bit of notice, saying, you know what, you got, you gotta take care of your building. So, again, I am strongly encouraging you guys to look at it. I'm not saying you pass anything this evening, but if you, if there are certain things in it that ca- are causing you heartburn, please let us know that. Otherwise, as staff and with Scott, um, our city attorney, we will go back and we will look at putting something together.
I think we have to remove the snowbird, and I would say it wouldn't maybe need to apply to residence unless it's maybe, I mean, this is just a couple of opinions, but unless it's a vacant rental or something like that, but.
Well, I voted for it last year, and I really strongly believe that maybe if we would've did this year ago, we might not be having this long of a meeting tonight. So, I'm still.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, finish.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that, um, this doesn't necessarily have any teeth. We can have the policy in place. If somebody doesn't register, what happens? Breaking local ordinance? Where's the, where's the penalty? Number one, where's the penalty? Um, number two, you have to prove that it's vacant, that it's not being used for anything, which on Main Street is probably fairly easy. Um, you could be saying it's being used for storage. Three, six months is not that long, really, honestly. Three, six months is not that long, really, honestly. Brutus, how long has Brutus been empty now?
Too long time.
About a couple of years.
Couple of years.
Say two or three, yeah.
So I think in my mind, I think it has to be quite a bit longer than six months.
Okay.
Um, sometimes you have, obviously, waves in the economy. People can't sell their building, they don't wanna take a big hit on it, so they hold off on selling it. One, as far as scooters goes, I don't know that, I don't, you know, I, obviously, I don't know, maybe you would have registered it, maybe not. Maybe we could do something with it, but it's, it probably comes to the same point is, you can't just tell them you have to fix your roof. It's still his property, you're still paying the taxes on it. You'd have to take him to court like we did and say, you have to condemn the building, correct Scott? If we had this ordinance in place, you still have to almost at the end go through the same process.
Um, I'm not sure, I mean, I think I did not sit down and review this ordinance, I haven't, because I've cleared one a little way to see. So I've been trying to kinda think back to,
Right.
a year ago and I've, uh,
Right. It feels, it just feels like another, another onerous action that's put on business owners and building owners that, if it's, well, maybe if, maybe extended period of time, five years even, um, whatever, but, if, if you read this through, there's a lot of steps that, that property owner would have to go through. A lot of, you know, property rights type of thing that you're probably allowing, so.
A lot of communities have this. I would say,
Yeah.
would have to have a good amount of communities that do have this. Especially towns that are growing.
Yeah, I'm not, but I'd have to look in and see, I couldn't be the answer, as to how many do, how many don't.
We should look into that.
Here, there was a time to, you know, looking at communities, upstate. I think we'd see more, in more onerous ordinances in that role.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where they're trying to combat lots of other problems, uh, but sort of like, yeah, we know goals, right? It's not like we're trying to reveal that, but I do know this was looking at s- several, several cities, upstate, what are they doing? Trying to look at the pe- you know, look at the pieces that they've got in place and come up with something.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
If they're not able.
And I think last time when we talked about this, and I was kinda on board with you Tony, but it was all the government overstepping their boundaries. But now we see what happens if we aren't gonna do anything? Because it could be a four hundred thousand dollar tax burden on taxpayers.
Well, and I think it's just, yeah.
You gotta look at doing something that at least you're looking at.
Right, and, and I, I'm not saying not to do this. I'm just saying we, we shouldn't just rush into it and pass it ordinance.
Well, we went through last year.
Yeah.
Well, but we didn't really look at it.
We went through three meetings last year with this.
And we're not saying pass it once, tell us how to sort it down to something that you can bear.
That you guys are comfortable with.
So, the other thing I would like to do is like Long Prairie has a lot of s- empty storefronts. Maybe we should get ahold of Long Prairie, see how they're handling it, with the empty storefronts. I think with, what.
I don't wanna talk to Long Prairie, I would rather see towns that are growing. How do you do to keep these businesses, keep these buildings from being boarded up?
Well, and just holding them accountable, holding these businesses accountable.
Yeah, for example, we have two buildings, we have the old Petro Plus and we have Brutus. People from out of state own these buildings and they don't care, they don't negotiate, and I have a video of rats at Brutus. But do you think those people in New York know that? I do have this video, if you wanna see it.
No, but I could about imagine.
I wanna see it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna walk in now. I showed that to you, I said, I'm gonna, I wanna see a rat.
So, I, I just, we gotta figure out something.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I think we gotta.
I think this is honestly a special meeting thing, or a planning and zoning thing.
Work session?
Work session, that we, you need to hash this through because.
So bring that file up, get everything that we had from last year, from all the meetings, and, and what the sticking points were, were the pros and cons. Um, but I wanna hear from towns that are growing, not towns that are, you know, not growing.
This was reviewed with planning and zoning, and we, this is what we brought to you.
Okay.
So this was reviewed with planning and zoning, yes.
Yeah.
So.
Tony is right that this is maybe something that you don't sit down and try to hash out every day.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
I won't even, I won't be afraid to invite a few property owners, local property owners, that.
Absolutely.
Maybe rent their properties out or, invite Nate, see what he thinks. Cause he's, he already had his hand up, he's volunteered.
While the stuff we buy, we do this all the time, they have rules on them, and that's why a lot of times we get the phone calls, little falls has a bunch of rules on their properties. And you have to fix them, they literally have a guy that will fly any of your rentals, any business, anything, if it's not right, you have to fix it.
Right.
Saint Cloud too, Saint Cloud's bad.
Yeah, Saint Cloud has a vacant building, Saint Michael does, Long Lake has one.
Granted, they're getting down to heavier populations, you have to tweak it accordingly. But at one time Melrose had a rule with roofs too, because, way back when the three cap shingles were around, uh, or actually McDonald's showed up one day and told me I had to fix it on my, uh, house on Long War on First Street. Stuff like that, I think should be, I mean, obviously, there's certain times when you can look at it, but, what, what we gotta do ultimately is take care of the town itself, and if you don't have something in place, not to mean, I, I paid to do it on my dad's place because he didn't have the money to do it, and that's where some of it comes into play also. But at the end of the day, some of it comes down to just not wanting to do it, just negligence on it.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I had the same experience, uh, too.
You talked about that, that's all.
Yep, it happened to me too, and,
Is it good?
I just remember when that police officer came to my house and he had to give that to me and he didn't want nothing to do with that one, but,
Oh, bad, y'all.
But I didn't, but I didn't realize my roof was bad, I just thought it was flawed. And some people don't wanna do it, but there are some people that don't have a clue that it needs to be done. And, and I know I was, I was for it, even though I got nailed on it, cause it helped me and it, I actually had old certainty shingles and I was able to get a whole bunch of credit on it.
Correct, knowing, knowing and having that little bit of insight helps.
Yeah. So, yeah, let's bring that to,
Yeah, some working session.
special meeting here soon or budget meeting.
We got a budget meeting, you know.
Um, the budget meeting's not until November, so if you wanna, I mean, but keep in mind, that's your budget meeting, you guys, and that workshop itself is gonna take you an hour for budget. So if you wanna add this to it, we certainly can, but that just, it's gonna be a long meeting, just saying.
Let's see if we can do it prior to the October meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Um.
So, yeah, so then that will push that one along. Okay, are we good with that Patty? A little motion made, okay. All right, well then we're on to new business, um, Dave Bereside wants to give us a little presentation, uh, we got a mic for you. Glad you're here Dave.
Thank you. This is an excerpt from the opening ceremony, it's part of every, uh, VFW meeting. And I recited that, ooh, it's been five years and years and years before I became the commander of the VFW and realized what it means. You can do the same thing on a number of things and it, it, you just have to, well, check your opinion at the door. So currently the fire and ambulance building is flying two flags, a US flag and a POW MIA flag. Memorial Park by the city maintenance building has a US flag, a POW MIA flag, and the old State of Minnesota flag. The Sock River Park had a US flag until recently and now there's no flag. And we can see here that we've got a US flag and an old Minnesota flag and a city Melrose flag. After the tornado in Melrose on August third, I was driving around the city looking at damage and noticed the US and State of Minnesota flags at the ambulance bay were gone. I wondered if this was because of the tornado. A few days later I noticed the flags were back up, but the old State of Minnesota flag had been replaced by POW MIA flag. This was the first time any other flag, other than the Minnesota flag, had flown at that building. On August nineteenth, I called Mayor Joe Finkin to ask why the state flag was replaced with the POW MIA flag. Joe said he had received phone calls from a couple of residents who were opposed to the newly designed Minnesota state flag. And he was trying to avoid conflict by putting up something less controversial. I spoke to Mayor again on September third and was reformed, informed that a number of POW MIA flags had been purchased and that those flags would be used up before any consideration to the new flag being flown. As Mayor Finkin and Councilman Clausen are aware, I am passionate about flags and flag etiquette. I was eighteen years, years old when I joined the Marine Corps, and being in the military gives one the sense of being part of something larger. I think many veterans would agree with me in saying that it isn't looking back at a time in service, that we see what we were able to accomplish. Representing our nation overseas in the military is where my passion comes from. Flags are important, flags show pride and unity. The Minnesota state flag was not designed in a vacuum. A redesign commission was established by the twenty twenty-three legislature. The redesigned commission had a specific purpose. Their purpose was to redesign a flag so that it reflected Minnesota's rich history, cultures, natural beauty while representing enduring values and aspirations. It is public knowledge that the State of Minnesota adopted a new flag on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, which became the official state flag on May eleventh, twenty twenty-four. This means that the old flag that was adopted in nineteen eighty-three is no longer the official state flag. As members of the city and representatives elected to this position of city council, it is our duty to respect the process of updating the Minnesota state flag. As community leaders, we need to show our community that we trust the individuals who are committed to the process of updating the flag. As city leaders, it is occasionally necessary to keep our opinions and our personal beliefs private. Maybe you didn't like the new state flag design or the process. Those are your personal beliefs or opinions, and I will respect them as much as I expect you to respect my beliefs and my opinions. Our personal beliefs or opinions are not the reason for the city of Melrose to refuse to fly the new state flag. We need to show unity in our community, and show the community that we are proud of our state. As I stated earlier, I am passionate about flags. Public space is not a venue for us to display our own personal opinions or beliefs. And I'm asking you, as city council members, to make a resolution to proudly fly our new flag. And I kinda went through the, so, this was the Minnesota flag from eighteen ninety-three to nineteen fifty-seven. What are the next flag? This was fifty-seven to eighty-three. Um, essentially, it's the Minnesota state seal on a blue flag. Uh, this is a twenty twenty-four one, there were some changes to the, the, uh, Native American and the, the farmer, um, again, not much of a change. And this is the new flag, and like I said, it was not designed in a vacuum. There was a committee, there was a process, they had, um, specific things they were tasked with, and they had a timeframe. And I, I guess I would go back to the statement of, it would be nice to have the city show our pride and fly the flag.
All right.
Any questions or?
Um, not really, I guess, but.
It's not an action item, is it?
No, it's a presentation. And you are one hundred percent correct Dave, on what you said about with, with, um, with me, what, what I said, that, that is, that is one hundred percent correct. Um, and, and I did say that, um, I, there is enough controversy in my opinion, um, where I basically don't wanna, I didn't wanna deal with it. And, and that's, that's a fact, that's, that's true what I said. Um, but also, you being a Marine, your son's a Marine, my son's a Marine, um, like Fridays, I, I really believe in the, the red line that, you know, shows support to our troops and that's why our water tower lights are red on Fridays for that. And, and that's why I felt more ominous, cause most fire stations do fly the, you know, the firefighter flag and the EMT flags. And, you know, we did always fly the Minnesota flag and I didn't wanna have to deal with putting two flags up. EMS is on the bottom and the fire on top, that's another reason why I didn't want to do that either, so that's why I did have the Minnesota flag. And I'm usually the one that's in charge of it, and I wanted the POW flag. From my opinion, I love flags too Dave, I got, I mean, you see how many flags I fly also. Um, and that's where I felt my ambition, um, to support our troops, support our servicemen. And that's, I just wanted to say that, that's why, to, for everybody to know why I resorted to, you know, we purchased, you know, POW flags for the fire station. Patriotism, again, in my personal opinion, i- it seems it's, it's a little more on a low and, and, um, I was great to hear that my wife had a preschool ask, why are they, you know, why are they flying a black flag at the fire station? So she gave a little insight about, you know, it's for soldiers and Marines and Airmen and, and Seamen. So I felt like I might have accomplished something, but that was before I talked to you. So I just wanted to, you know, I understand.
So my question is then, when, what kind of timeline is there a policy? What kind of timeline are we looking at?
There isn't a policy, I think the statute kind of outlines, um, something related to that, I think you're allowed to keep.
So the seals, the official seal, anything that, I guess, I could, I have the statute here, um, would you like, we never did?
Um, Marley, you're getting that, do you have to change your, your, um, all your badges now, Craig?
We haven't had that discussion at all, I believe Steve and Paul have had that conversation.
Okay.
So the, the, like I said earlier, the flag itself, that is no longer the official flag.
Okay.
Um, as far as, as far as, um, using up, um, other things, state agencies and departments using the seal, its impression or its likeness shall make every effort to bring any seal, impression or likeness currently fixed to a permanent object in accordance with this section and set forward in section four oh four. Expendable materials to which the seal is, in effect, prior to May eleven, twenty twenty-four, or any impression, scene or likeness of that seal is currently affixed may be used until the plat- supply is exhausted or until January one, twenty twenty-five, whichever occurs first. All unused dyes and engravings of the great seal shall be given to the Minnesota Historical Society along with all historical information available about the seal to be retained in the society's permanent collection. So, the delay, excuse me, the delay has to do with the seal, it does not have to do with the flag. The flag, the date for that was May eleven. There are a number of cities flying the flag, if you go into Saint, Saint Cloud, um, Saint Cloud is flying it, uh, Wake Park is flying it. We can't ignore that we're in the State of Minnesota. On your private property, you can do whatever you want. There is nothing, there's no police gonna come out and cuss and stuff you for that.
So Dave, are you asking us to fly it all the time, or can it still be exchanged out every couple of months?
Well, I get, my question is if there was a policy, and I, it does not sound like there is. And so I would like to go back to whatever the custom was before. If the custom was to fly, and it appeared to me to be that, to fly the US flag and the State of Minnesota flag, that would be my preference. If you want to intersperse that with something else, tomorrow is POW MIA day, perfect day. Firefighter week. Firefighter week, perfect day to fly something else. You can fly the POW flag under US flag. So I'm not an expert on flag etiquette. I will say that right away. I do have, the VFW puts out these handy flyers pamphlets, and I have some of those if anyone is interested. It gives flag etiquette. It does not cover the state flag.
And I guess it's up to the council, um, like, and again, I I'm just, I'll be honest, I'm not thrilled about it. I, and I said it to you, I, I was not interested in the process of how it went. And since it's not a state building, I didn't, I had no thought or even care about flying it on the fire station. And and I've said that to you.
I would con- I would concur with you on that.
I, I mean, we can remove this flag from here, put that one up. I don't know if I.
So again, I would, I would go back to the personal opinion and personal belief.
Yep.
So you are the council, and you have committees, and you have all of those sort of things. And there is a process. You know there is a process. You've been in those numerous times. There's a process.
Yep.
It's not a vacuum.
Correct. And we've been voting.
There was a comment period. All of this was delineated in the mandate that that redesign committee had. All of it was.
We, we can, at this table, start talking politics on that also.
I don't think we're talking politics.
We could. I mean, that's very, that's very, it was very divisive the way that committee was formed by the current legislature in Minnesota. So if we want to start talking about that, I don't think we have time tonight. But anyway, we, we can, we could go down on, on that process and start talking about how, how we came up with that flag in Minnesota. I shouldn't say we, I had nothing to do with it.
That would be a personal opinion and a belief. The, the fact is that it is state law. You can.
But we don't have to fly, but we don't have to fly it here.
No, you do not.
Right.
No.
No, you do not.
Right. And I think, in, in my opinion, I don't know where everybody else is at, but I don't think we're gonna fly that here for now.
Okay, again, that is your personal opinion.
But it would take five votes, or three out of five votes here to make, to change that.
So now, have we set a policy? Is that it?
No, it isn't.
Have we set a policy?
But if we had voted on it, if we've come to that conclusion, I think that we're gonna vote on it and decide whether or not. I, I don't know. We can debate this for an hour, and I don't know if we're gonna get anywhere.
Well, more different than I thought. It should have just been a Minnesota state vote on what you want the flag to look like and not a committee made up. Do you make it a vote of the city, and if they want us to fly it, then they'll vote on it?
In all of these previous designs, they were not voted at, at the state level. None of them were. None of them.
Right. But they also didn't change a lot.
Well, if you look at the.
They could have used our new Minnesota.
Eighteen eighty-three to fifty-seven, which was their longest amount of time. That was the biggest change.
What year? This year?
But that was always the Minnesota state seal, right?
This one?
Well, before that.
Right here.
And that was the Minnesota state seal, though.
Uh, the seal is different than this.
Okay. Because now I see the seal got changed.
Yes, I believe so at the same.
So I'm just, I mean, part of me is like, why did they use that?
Flag and the seal.
Right. Because that's where I questioned, like, well, why didn't they just use the seal? They had it on the last flag. What was wrong with flying the new state seal?
So I, 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 again, I would go back to my, my, one of my original questions, um, is there a policy? What is the policy on public buildings? I don't think we have a policy.
We never had a po- we'd never had a policy. In fact, we always only had one flag at the fire station as long as I was, been alive, except for when we built a new fire station. That's the first time we flew more than one flag. Never flew it before that. Um, in fact, we never had a, uh, Minnesota flag in our old fire station or the old one on Main Street. I remember that one very well. So, yeah, there is no policy. I, I don't, I guess I, I would rather ask for other people's opinions. I, I don't come to this opinion arrogantly. I've been involved with politics for almost eighteen years. I've always voted for stuff, what is the better good for the community? I've made hard votes that I personally didn't like, but I knew it was for the better good of the community. And and so I never, I didn't take this one lightly. So I guess I'm looking for other people's opinions, if, if they want to set a policy or not. I, I, I'm the one who's always been in charge of the flag at the fire station, being a firefighter for twenty-six years. I was one who got the donations for the flag poles from the Legion and the VFW, um, so that was always just my job. And so I basically, you know, in respectfully, I did what I wanted to do because I was in charge of it.
And we're flying the US flag on all the other poles besides at the station. I was the only one that really, you guys change out the one flag. So.
United States flag.
I mean, if, if we want to make it so, hey, what does everybody want on the second? And make a poll every six months, that, yeah.
So I, I think that the amount of community involvement you're gonna get on it is gonna be extremely small.
Right, but, I mean, I guess I don't, I mean, why should it be us as government officials making a decision what we're gonna fly either? Like, at that point, then I would say, you have a list of three, whatever those lists are, every six months, and you throw it out as a Facebook poll or something. If whatever gets the most votes, that's the kind of flag we're gonna put up for that month, or for that month.
Well, and the thing is.
I'm just throwing it out there because.
And flags aren't cheap, though, I mean.
Because we could fly the Minnesota flag, and next month we'll have another person coming in here that's gonna say, we should be flying this flag, or we should be flying that flag. Where does it end?
I think it's good that at least that you're here. Now we can get some feedback. You know, I, I think that's one thing, because I, I have never made a vote. I always, when I make a vote, I try to think of three thousand six hundred and twenty-two people, not five or ten. And 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 now that, at least you're, you're talking about it, now maybe people can rattle our cages.
So, again, not to sound like a broken record, but it appears that you're allowing your personal opinion and belief to enter into this. It was your personal opinion of a process done at the state level for why you pulled down the old flag, right?
I voted, I vote for the people, not myself. And and again, if I would get fifteen hundred people that are gonna call me and say, I want that other flag up, then I would have to do it. But until I get that, I don't see the love of the new Minnesota flag in the majority of the people in the state or in the, in the community, and we don't have to fly it.
No, we don't. I'm, I'm not asking you what your opinion of it is.
So I, I respectfully, I, I don't have to fly it. I mean, it's, it's not that we have to fly it.
No, we do it out of respect. We do it out of respect for the process and all of the other things that go with being a community in a state.
If we had the Melrose flag, I'd happily, I'd happily fly, say, let's fly the Melrose.
I, I, it's cost prohibitive. I protect it, and we've been checking on different prices because I've wanted to fly Melrose flags.
Which, which is cost prohibitive.
I'm trying to get these flags. Um, it's been expensive. I'm trying to find different vendors that we could give Melrose flags. I would rather fly a Melrose flag before I had to fly a Minnesota flag, because I do have personal love for this town. I, but I haven't found the prices yet that were worthwhile. And and I'm not, I mean.
If it's a question of cost on flying the new flag down there, I would pay for the flag.
A Melrose flag?
No, the Minnesota flag.
Yeah, no, that's not what I'm getting at. Like I said, I don't, I don't believe that I'd have the support. And and I don't. I, out of respect, I don't want to fly it. I mean, I'm being honest. I mean, I don't like the process. The state of Minnesota, that's my opinion, so we don't have to fly it. It's sort of like this. If, if I don't like what McDonald's is serving, I don't go back there. I'll go to Burger King. I don't like what's happening. I'm gonna support somebody else that I feel is better for a better good. And the reason why I did it, I didn't like the process, so I thought patriotism, patriotism would be a lot better. I'd rather see a POW flag, because to me, we've had a POW from Melrose from the Korean War that his body still is not back yet. They only declared him dead about eight years ago. I would rather have a memory of someone like that. You know, Mr. Brown served our community, and he served his country, and he died for our country in Korea. I would rather put that as respect for him than this. And that's my opinion. I mean, we have a marker over by the tank. I don't know if any of you have ever seen it, right behind the big memorial, there's a placard for Mr. Brown.
Again, you're allowing your personal opinion to weigh in on a public matter. I don't know how you don't see it that way.
I, I do. I, I said, I admit, it is my personal opinion, and it's my opinion. I don't have to put it up. I only did it because it was convenient, and we've done it. It was, we've been doing it forever. Go ahead, Scott, I guess, whatever.
Obviously, we needed to go somewhere.
Personal opinion argument works both ways.
Yes.
Our personal opinion is that it should be flown out of respect. Their personal opinion is, we've got problems with this and we don't want to do it. You're not gonna resolve that.
No.
They've heard your opinion and we're starting to go around and around the surface.
Nice and quiet.
I'm all spoken. I'm sorry.
They disagree with your opinion. It shouldn't be flown out of respect for the state and the process. They disagree. I don't think you're convincing of, doesn't mean you shouldn't keep trying.
And and I have great respect for you, Dave. I, I think you know I've always had great respect, and maybe I just differ this opinion. I don't disrespect you for it. I appreciate it, and that's why I said, I, I was more than happy to give you, give you the time.
So it, it's, it's not just the, I'm saying you're allowing your personal opinion. It's also the changing policy. And that, that occurred at the same time.
I.
But we aren't required to.
My opinion, if we're gonna make a policy of what flags we need to fly, then it needs to be voted on. I'm sorry. That's my opinion, because then I want everybody's opinion in the town. If ten only come in and say, and vote, well, that's the same that you get when you vote for president. Ten only come in, well, I guess we tried. So it's no different than us getting voted on. I mean, we get, what, six hundred votes? Well, we got a lot more population in town than that. It's what it is. That's, how many people came in the vote, so. If we're, if we're gonna make a policy, that's what I, if we're gonna make a policy on what we're gonna be flying in this town, then it needs to, it's gonna be a pain, but vote on what gets flown, because one person might want to fly that, the next one wants. I, I agree that probably the old Minnesota flag, yeah, well, it's probably not supposed to be flown anymore, because the new one is old, and that's what it is, but. I mean, unless you're gonna switch them just to the US flag, and that's what you fly.
In, in response to Mr. David over here, um, I'm not saying that we have to fly the new flag. I'm not saying as a city that you have to do it.
Right.
I'm not saying that I want to force you to do it. I'm saying that if it is a problem of money, I would pay for it to be there. And if, if it's a policy change, then I, I don't see how that policy change was made without the personal opinion of the process or what it designed as.
Right. And it sounds like there's no policy. I don't think there is a policy.
There's no policies been changed because there is no policy.
Right. So that's how I understand the policy. So I think for wrapping up tonight is there's no policy, so you don't have to fly it, even though Mr. Bearse would like us to. And another night or another agenda packet, we have to decide if there's gonna be a policy put in place. And if not, then we carry on.
Right.
Everyone has an opinion, and you go by that. That's how I see it.
And and I think Carol's gonna put something in the paper about it, maybe a little heading, what are people's opinions? That'd be nice to hear from the public, too.
I mean, we gotta wrap this up somehow, as there's no policy, so we're not breaking a policy.
I don't think there's any action we're taking tonight, right?
Because I agree, I think Dave's got good points. I learned a lot about the flag as well, and it shouldn't be about one or two people's opinion. But if there's no policy, nobody's doing anything wrong currently, so let's get that on the next.
Right.
Agenda. Thanks, Dave.
And Dave, I'm glad you're here. Informational items, utility commission meeting minutes, schools and conferences. Is there any questions? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
For a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carried.